Good evening. Welcome to the June 15 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview. This meeting is now called to order. Commissioner Noon will lead us in the invocation. All rise please.
Please join me in the invocation. Our Most Gracious Heavenly Father, again, we're so thankful that you provide for us. We're thankful for the opportunity to not only live in this community, but to somehow serve this community. And we just ask that you be with the men and women that meet tonight, and the people who have concerns or whatever, and guide and direct us in everything that we do. And we ask these things in thy name. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We would like to introduce our new commissioners tonight. We had four positions that were vacant, and we have three of those here this evening. The first is Chad Harkey. Would you stand, please? Thank you. Welcome Chad.
Thanks.
Dutch de Blauw, welcome.
Thank you.
Pat O'Rear. And Heath Hamblin is our fourth member, and he will be joining us at the next meeting. We really appreciate your commitment and your service to the commission. We look forward to working with you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting in April. If everyone has had an opportunity to look at those, are there any corrections? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We've now reached the citizen comment portion of our meeting. This portion for citizen comments are the comments that are made other than the public hearing items that we have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until that time to speak. So if you have any citizen comments, you're invited to come to the microphone at this time. State your name and address for the public record. Seeing none, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The commission also considers plats. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be: the public hearing will be opened, and testimony will be heard in the following order: first from staff, then from the applicant, and then from the general public. And that includes those in support of or in opposition of the request. If you're in part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. And when addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on July 15. We're now on to our regular agenda item A, and I will ask Angela to introduce it.
Thank you. Consider application RP 21-03 Westview Villas filed by Tessa Bradley to replat approximately 1.461 acres of Lot 2, Block 1 of Westview Villas into five lots located on the east side of McCann Road north of Technology Center. And I'll go into my staff report. The applicant is requesting to replat one lot into five residential lots located on the east side of McCann Road north of Technology Center. The applicant has not installed the longside sewer services and sidewalk, and she has not provided the estimate for the required infrastructure with a letter of credit to the planning and zoning staff before this meeting. Staff recommends approval with the condition that an estimate for both the longside sewer service and sidewalk be provided along with a letter of credit for the amount of both, or that she install the outstanding infrastructure prior to filing the plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you Angela. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll now open the public hearing. I didn't give the opportunity for the applicant to speak yet.
I don't believe I see the applicant in the...
Is there a representative here for this agenda item? Alright. Hearing none, or seeing none, we will now move to the public hearing. Is there anyone that supports this request? If so, please come to the microphone. Is there anyone that's in opposition to the request? Likewise. Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? The public hearing is now closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this based upon the staff recommendation, but this be included in the acceptance.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Regular agenda item B. Angela, please.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We held to consider application SW 21-06 filed by Francisco Pittman for a waiver to the City of Longview UDC subdivision regulations, Article D, Section 5.02, Subsection A, to allow for a minimum lot depth of approximately 89 feet instead of the required 100 feet minimum in single-family 4 zoning district for approximately .175 acres of proposed Lot 1, Block 1 Lasso subdivision located at the southwest corner of El Paso and Lily Street. And I'll go into my staff report. The applicant is requesting this waiver. This lot was originally one large tract of land that was illegally subdivided from the lots to the south and west quite a few years ago. This property is zoned SF4, which does require a minimum lot width of 60 feet, minimum depth of 100 feet, and a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. The applicant can meet the width and the lot size requirement, however, they do not meet the depth requirement. The proposed lot would have a lot width of 85 feet and a depth of 89 feet and a lot size of 7623 square feet. The applicant is attempting to make this lot compliant by going through the plating process and correcting an illegal subdivision. And also, if you can see on the plat, he is dedicating some right-of-way for El Paso Street. It appears that right-of-way was never dedicated for that street. With the dedication of that street, it does make his lot shorter. It makes it 89 feet deep instead of the minimum 100 feet. This lot is located in the South Longview Incentive Program area and has been approved for the SLIP program, so all his fees have been waived. Staff does recommend approval of this waiver. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? Thank you Angela. Is the applicant present? Would you come to the microphone and tell us about your project?
Hello, everybody.
Good evening. And your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Francisco Pittman. My address is 1407 East Birdsong Street here in Longview.
Okay.
About a year ago, we purchased a lot, me and my nephew, because he wants to build a, he'd like the property to build a house. So we purchased the property not knowing the requirement, that the city had a requirement of the lot. So we purchased the property, and we had it clean. We invested, we had invested over $8,000 to get it clean, because there was a, there was old structure there, a little bit of it. And we cut some trees down, getting it ready. But our mistake was that we didn't check with the city first to see the measurements. And once I came and got more information on it, that's when they told me that the lot wasn't compliant. And I had already done a, when they measured the lot. So we were excited to build, build a house for my nephew, and this kind of set us back. And it, and we were pleading that, to go ahead and please let us continue with our project. I know that it's gonna be, in the long run, it's gonna be more taxes paid on the, the way, the worth of the value on it right now. And go make a happy family by allowing us to build a house. It's gonna be his first house, and I'm, and we're excited about it. So other than that, I'm just pleading with y'all to please let us continue with our project.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Do any, do any of you have any questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support or in opposition of this request? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Calling for a motion, please.
Why don't you go first?
I'll second.
Who is the second?
Ryan.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. It was approved. Mr. Pittman.
Thank you.
Regular agenda item C.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We held to consider application Z 21-12 filed by Avner Zachary requesting a rezone from single-family 4 to general retail zoning district for lots 1 through 3, Block A, Judson Heights subdivision located at 4,500 Judson Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone at this location. His tenant would like to construct an addition to this site, a small building addition. Judson Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway. Retail development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. If you look at the zoning map, to the north, to the south, and to the west is general retail. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the surrounding uses and the future lane use map, and does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of the commissioners? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you come to the microphone, give your...
I'm listening.
Okay, thank you. Give us your name and address, please.
Greg Zachary. I'll give his address. 1501 Creek Lane, Longview 75605.
Okay, thank you. Tell us about your project.
I think it's, I think it's pretty plain that the land around it is all zoned commercial. It was grandfathered in and used for commercial purposes up until this point, and just asking that be made legal for going forward.
I was a little confused when I drove that, so I have a couple of questions. I know the building that's currently, has been repurposed for the landscape business. And then the next building, is it vacant? It was the educational...
No.
No. It's not vacant. Okay. So that is still occupied and open?
Yes ma'am.
And then...
Seven years.
And then the, the residents just north of that, which is the Yellow House, the very attractive home, are any of those that I just mentioned in these three blocks besides, besides...
No. It's just, it's just Mr. Zachary's landscape, or the, his tenant, the landscape business.
The lot just didn't look that large. That's the reason I'm asking. So I was confused.
Yeah.
Alright. And where does he want to do this construction that he's wanting to do on it?
We don't have any plans yet. The gentleman, his tenant did come speak to me, or called me on the phone, and wanted to do a small storage building, I believe, right behind that metal building, kind of where I think there's some equipment. I can't pan to it, but right behind his metal. It's a very small building, a small storage building. But any type of expansion, because this is zoned single-family, requires either rezoning if appropriate, or going, going to the Board of Adjustment to allow for the expansion upon a non-conforming use, because they are non-conforming based on the current zoning that they're in right now. So they're requesting...
Could you repeat that, please? What did you just say?
Sorry, that, it is a little confusing. And so, Mr. Zachary's business has always been there. They were grandfathered in. They were annexed into the city. And so, with that designation, there's own single-family. And so, with that, they can have their business there, or any type of similar uses. However, when they want to expand, or even go to a different use, rent it out for a different tenant, they will need to be compliant with zoning. And so, with the request for an addition, or do even a storage building, a small storage building, they need to be compliant with zoning. So that's why they're requesting this zoning change.
From SF4 to general retail?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for that corner, for that business?
That's correct. But they own three lots. So if you're looking at this aerial, they have three lots. That business sits on three lots. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it does?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And so the, the new zoning would apply to all three lots?
Yes, that is correct.
And so then there's only one lot in between that's still residential?
No. If you look, the property to the north is zoned general retail. The property to the south is also zoned general retail, and then also to the west.
Okay, yeah.
Where the Yellow House is sitting, how is that zoned?
Um, I believe, the Yellow House is right to the north. They are zoned single-family. If you look above that GR, and it says GR 81-40, right above there, they're single-family right there.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now I can understand the map a little better. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your attendance. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak, speak in support of or opposition of this agenda item? Please give us your name and address.
Cliff Carpenter, 1827 Shenandoah Court North or 4,506 Judson Road. The property immediately north, the Educational Supply Store. We've owned the property and operated a, my wife a supply store there for 30 something years. For clarification, the house to the north is a single-family residence. It is owned by a gentleman by the name of Bob Beasley. I don't know.
He was sick. He couldn't come.
He was sick and couldn't come. And as far as the business to the south, they've always been good neighbors. We've had no complaints with them, one way or another.
Good.
What we are concerned with, and would like more in-depth, is being zoned general retail, what type of retail? And I know your category here is really, really broad. And the Educational Supply Store, we would not want some, shall I say, sleazy business coming in. We have teachers from all over East Texas coming there, and we would be concerned. As far as the current business, the landscape, selling ATVs, whatever, we have no objection to that. But we would like to know the purpose of the rezoning and what might. It, it opens it up for a wide array of things. And that is our concern, and that is my question.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Can you address that?
Yes. So general retail does allow retail-type uses, including the existing building that is, or the existing business that is there. You also are zoned general retail in the property to the west and south. So what type of businesses would you be concerned, when you say sleazy, are you meaning like an adult store?
Yes.
Those businesses...
A vape shop.
Okay.
Anything like that.
Okay, so adult, those adult stores have a certain distance requirement. And I believe, I think it's 1,000 feet from residential, so I don't think that an adult store could actually go at this location. However, a vape store could go in general retail zoning district. They could, they could, you know, if you were to ever go out of business, they could lease your business. They could lease the property to the west. So unfortunately, a vape store is allowed in any general retail zoning district.
Something like that would be what we would object to on behalf of ourselves.
Angela, does it not have to be resubmitted each time a new tenant goes in?
No, because the zoning for general retail is just a straight zoning. So it allows for all the uses that are allowed in general retail, which does include a vape store.
So the only way around that would be send it to the ZBA, have them just do a exception for this building, and that would keep the zoning in place?
That is correct. But every time they would do an expansion, they would have to go before the zoning Board of Adjustment.
But that would mean at that point, if a vape shop would want to come in and then repurpose the building as retail, at that point, it could be...
Mm-hmm.
That would, that seems to have opened the door. And I, I thought I heard you give an alternative to rezoning, is to go for it.
Oh, well, Mr. De Blau did say that they could go to the zoning Board of Adjustment and request to allow for the expansion upon a non-conforming use. However, every time that they would have to do, request an expansion, they would have to go to the zoning Board of Adjustment every time. Yes.
Would you foresee that being the case more than once? I mean, this is a, it's a storage building for the building, for the business?
Yes, that's correct.
That seems logical. Just do it that once and...
The lot is very full.
Right.
It's a very compact lot.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, so you're, so when you... By saying that, you mean because they can't add on each time?
Yeah.
There wouldn't be more visits over the same subject?
Yeah.
Could be, but...
And the other thing that this would open it up to is if they rezoned it, and next week they could bulldoze it, build something else, and...
But you're not talking about adding on to the records. You're talking about a certain small store building, does that make sense?
Yes, they're, they're requesting...
Do you know what's happening there?
No. I mean, they haven't submitted any plans. I mean, they, they asked, they wanted to do an expansion, and we said, hey, you know, you're not zoned appropriately. This property was grandfathered in. However, you know, you have general retail surrounding you. This property is surrounded by general retail except to the east.
So if going through ZBA, you could, you could kind of protect everyone and just go, okay?
Not, not necessarily.
Because under the use change, as long as the use is the same intensity or less, they can still have a change in use. So a vape shop is the same or less intensity. It's just retail sales. So if this business is closed, they want to rent it to a vape shop, that vape shop could go in there. So you wouldn't be preventing that type of use.
Is it a, it's an actual building, not a, not a...
Yeah, what's the minimum square footage that you have to apply for a rezon? Like, if they're saying, do they just want a storage shed or storage building? Like what, like elaborate on...
Is it being built on-site, or is it brought in?
I don't know that we know that. I think they were just asking generic questions. So because it's non-conforming, you can't expand a non-conforming use or non-conforming structure. So because it's single-family, they can keep it the same or less. They just can't do anything additionally to it without bringing it into compliance. So, you know, any kind of retail sales, and we've seen a number of different retail sales out of that, you know, I think there was ATVs and some other things like that. So anything that's minor, generic retail could go in and out of there without having to get any special approvals, or any kind of expansion of the building, or expansion of the business. So if there was something that was more intense than that business that's there. But it's retail, so you're talking about really any kind of major commercial, which the zoning wouldn't allow for anyway. So really just kind of cleaning up on paper what's already occurring out there. And it would allow them to do any kind of, you know, improvements to the property, any kind of expansions with the building.
Hey, let me reiterate. We have no problem with the existing building. The existing tenants are those who have had it leased in the past. They've always been very nice folks. Our concern is opening it up for future, I don't want to say abuse, but future use that would not be compatible with an educational supply store and little teachers coming out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of or in opposition of this agenda item? Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carrie Hunter. I live at 105 Collins Avenue here in the city. I'm here this evening to express my opposition to the request for rezon. I live next door to the business in question, and let me say that my opposition has no negative reflection on the property owner, Mr. Zachary. It is based solely on the prior, the two, the couple prior tenants, lack of respect to the neighbors. With this being said, since the new tenants have moved in, I've noticed a nitrate foul, gassy, egg-like smell. I'm aware that high levels of nitro, nitrate can be toxic to livestock and humans, and can also cause various illnesses. These toxin fumes are concerning to me, because there are babies, there are some of us seniors and adults that have pre-existing illnesses. I am all for anyone providing for their families. However, I am opposed to any fertilizer or other substances that will cause harm or ill health in our community. We all want to sit outside this summer without the offensive smell. I ask that you disapprove the rezoning request. I thank you for your continued service and support our City of Longview community. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your residence again, please?
105 Collins. I'm directly behind the building in question.
Have you, have you spoken to the business about the smell and what causes it?
I have not. I was, I just was told about the smell this morning. There's so many things that are going on in the neighborhood. And there's a potty, portable potty across the street, so I thought that was the smell that I was getting. And then I was informed that it was a nitro smell. And so I, when I go out, I indeed smell that it's right there, because my fence is right there.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. We appreciate your coming. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. The applicant has another comment.
Well, I appreciate our neighbors, and I think we can say the same. Been great neighbors through, how many years have you on that?
45.
25.
It's been in the store for 37.
37. So we, we've certainly been good neighbors. And I will assure you that, I know this doesn't affect the zoning if we were to sell it. But as long as my dad or me and my brother own it, there would never be inappropriate business that we would lease to. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's just for your insurance, to be sure that, that would not be favorable for us either. Currently, we have no desire to sell it. If it were so to this owner, he is very detailed. You can see he's doing a lot of improvements to the property with flowers and sod and those kind of things. And I think he would be very responsive to, to your concerns for some smell, if there could be something done to limit that or prevent that, if he was aware of that. Certainly, in landscaping, he does have fertilizer. It looks like it's bagged. But if there was something that could be done to help with that, I know, I know he would be receptive. He's that kind of leaser. And we would be supportive of that, too, of making sure it's not offensive to the neighbors. And anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you, sir. Daisy, but any additional questions from the commissioners?
What was the purpose of the building, again?
What was the purpose?
Yeah, what was it gonna be used for?
It's used for landscape, landscape business. It's...
No, I'm saying, is it like for storage?
Uh, yes. Storage of equipment. They store their lawn mowing equipment, their landscaping equipment, supplies, materials. I know they've had pallets of sod there. I think those bags probably are fertilizer that you see in the picture there. But it's a landscape business, one of the cleanest run I've ever seen. Just, I'm talking about just really well, well-maintained, well-kept up, well-organized, clean, clean machines. So they're very respectful. We're, we're very happy to have them as tenants, for sure, because of the way they're taking care of the property.
Do you have any sense the size of the facility that's being, planning to be built?
I don't. I don't think it would be very large, though, because of, there's just not a lot of extra room for equipment or... for equipment or, or materials. But as Angela said, I don't think they've designed anything.
But I believe it's very small. Like, I mean, it, I believe it's going kind of behind this building right here. So, it's a very small building. Because he's, he still has to maintain parking spaces and drive aisles.
Does it give you any concern, you guess, as far as if it gets rezoned? Like, kind of like you elaborated on?
No, because they can already, I mean, the reality is they're already operating as a commercial business. They're kind of grandfathered in as commercial because of the outdoor sales and storage.
That building right now that's, that's existing, it could be a vape shop in a week or two, or three.
Well, it could be if it was sold.
No, what I'm saying, I'm being devil's advocate. So, we're not really going to negate any issue by giving them okay to do a, a building on it for storing all that stuff, which probably would alleviate some of her concern with the smell.
Yeah, because, because the reality is general retail doesn't allow for outdoor storage and sales of equipment and materials. But because they're grandfathered with the outdoor sales and storage, that's why it's been allowed to continue. So, they're already operating at a much higher level than what general retail would even allow for.
Yeah. I misunderstood initially because I didn't, I, I thought that we would be adding a problem for the neighbors and others that, oh, okay, now you're opening it up for future land use. Well, we're really not, then?
Yeah, the, the biggest limiting factor on what could go there in the future is going to be the size of the property, the building and the parking. You know, if you were to do retail in the whole building and, you know, that could be problematic because there's not a lot of room there.
That's all fenced in too, isn't it?
So, did you just say that even with the general retail designation, they still would not feel within the, the rules of that?
Correct. The outside, the, the outside storage of materials and equipment, that is something that is generally in heavy commercial zoning. General retail is really a light retail with everything inside the building. Doesn't allow for outdoor storage, outdoor sales except for temporary during the day, seasonal. But because it's been there for, you know, prior to annexation, that, that aspect of the property's been grandfathered.
Okay, so they would retain that grandfather even with the new zone?
Now, if the next business that came in and that went away and it was just straight retail, then that grandfathering goes away. But as long as they maintain that, which they have throughout the years in, in some form that's equivalent, then that grandfathering stays in place.
Understood, okay.
Any additional questions? Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am? And I'm going to ask you to give me your name one more time, please.
C-A-R-R-I-E. Last name Hunter, H-U-N-T-I-A-R.
Thank you.
Now, the, what I'm smelling, I'm gonna say that, is, it's not in a bag. It's in like one of those little cubicles that's there. So, it's open. It's what? Okay, okay. So, I don't, I don't know the difference. All I know is the odor is there.
So, nothing that we do is going to affect that anyway, though, right? I mean, the?
Correct.
So, voting to put a building there, a storage building, I don't think either way is going to affect that. That's probably something you might want to work out amongst yourselves or?
There have been people, other people in the neighborhood that have come in it on the smell because they sit out and, and, you know, we've all been under COVID. So, we all want to sit out this summer and enjoy the fresh air.
And they might, and they might put, they might put that in storage, maybe?
So, maybe that's what storage is for.
Could, it could be.
There's a house.
Oh, that would be good, so, that would be good.
It is a small, small building, but it can keep the fertilizer and keep it from getting wet.
He has done a tremendous job on the improvement. So, I've heard, because I don't go down that street. But I did see some of his flowers inside the gate and they are so very pretty. But that doesn't have anything to do with my concerns because my concern is the health of the neighborhood, you know, the well-being and the health.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Any other comments, questions?
Cliff Carpenter again. Would it be possible, appropriate, to give these gentlemen a waiver to build their storage building? Which seems that that would satisfy the neighbors and make their property better? So, I guess I'm asking, is it possible for you to grant a waiver for them to build their building and just have it done with?
This board cannot grant a waiver. They would have to go before the zoning board of adjustment, which is a different board.
That's what Commissioner DeBlau was asking earlier.
Yes, that is correct.
And the, the only issue with that is, is that after that every other change, if they, let's say they put one small storage building now and later they want another small storage building, they would have to go back to the ZBA again and again and again for everything. And because they're already grandfathered in currently, it, it wouldn't make a difference one way or another. If we rezon it, it just allows them to make those changes within the city code without having to come back each time for approval on each item and have to go through the whole rigamarole because it's quite a process to, to go through the ZBA as well. It sounds like regardless, if we approve this or deny, the purpose is already there. Like, the business is there and will stay there. But with the rezoning, it will allow them to make those changes within the code without any extra cost and rigamarole.
Like your concern earlier about that type of business, they could do that right now regardless of what way we vote. It could be a vape shop next week if he decided to tear it down and sell it. It could be a vape shop. So, it's not really adding to your concern by letting them do a storage building for that type of business other than cleaning it up, you know, giving them places to store their stuff.
You're talking about from the vape store for the lawn supply?
For the, for the vape, for the, you know, they can't, they, anybody could put a vape store in there right now anyway. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
And I'm not knowledgeable enough on this to suggest it. But maybe the city code under general retail may be too broad. Have you ever considered that?
It's not our job, though. We don't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing and a call for the motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's participation. The last item on the agenda is a staff update. Angela, would you please give us the report from the July 10 city council meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Four items went to council. We did have two that withdrew. But the one that withdrew was Walnut Hill and the item on Magnolia Lane. Those both withdrew prior to going to council. But all other items did go to council and were all approved.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Hearing done, this meeting is adjourned.